To start the meeting of May 8th, starting with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
George Pond.
Present.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
Larry Matthews.
Present.
Madam Mayor, we do not have a quorum.
Thank you. As I understand, because we don't have a quorum, that we're, we can go forward with the, I can read the proclamation, we can have citizens' right to speak, but we can't make any official decisions tonight. So I'm going to go forward, I'm going to do the proclamations. I don't know if we can approve this council minutes or not. Nope, that would be official. Nope. Okay. I have three, 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 three. Is it up? Yep. Okay. Thank you. You checked it, didn't you? You did a good job. First proclamation is in regard to Municipal Clerk's Week. Da-da. Whereas, the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of the neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas, the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas, municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, regional, county, and international professional organizations. Now therefore, I, Joyce J., Mayor, and the City of Council, Wheat Ridge, Colorado, do recognize the week of May 7th through May 13th as Municipal Clerk's Week, and extend further appreciation to our municipal clerk, Janelle Schaefer, and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform, and their exemplary dedication to the committee they represent. Let's give a hand to our municipal clerk.
Thank you.
Our second proclamation is in observance of National Police Week, and May 15th is National Police Officers Memorial Day. But Chief Brennan is walking over. Whereas, the Congress and President of the United States have designated the week of May 14th through May 20th as Police Week, and May 15th as Police Officers Memorial Day. And whereas, it is important to recognize and honor the ultimate service made by three Colorado law enforcement officers in 2016 in service to their communities. Whereas, it's important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property. Whereas, the Police Department of the City of Wheat Ridge has grown to be a modern and community policy-based law enforcement agency, which unceasingly provides a vital public service to your community in partnership with law-abiding citizens. Now, therefore, I, Joyce J., Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, call upon all citizens of Wheat Ridge and upon all patriotic civil and education organizations to observe the week of May 14th through 2017. I further call upon all citizens of the City of Wheat Ridge to observe May 15th as National Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of those peace officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of a duty. Now, our police chief, Dan Bennett.
Just a couple of words, Council and Mayor. First of all, on behalf of the Police Department, I'd like to thank you for, for your support. You know, 2016 was a difficult year for law enforcement nationally and, and in Colorado. In 2016, we lost three law enforcement officers. Deputy Derek Gier with Mesa County in February of 2016 was shot by a juvenile suspect while attempting to take him into custody. Corporal Nathan Carrigan with the Park County Sheriff's Office, who was shot and killed during a high-risk eviction that was being done by the Park County Sheriff's Officer, Office. And then Trooper Cody Donahue, who died November 25th of 2016 during the investigation of a, of a traffic accident. He was hit and killed by a DUI, DUI driver. So if we could just take a moment in remembrance of, of those officers as a, as a council and the community, their families would appreciate that. Thank you. Again, thanks for your support of our Police Department. Thanks to the community for being such great support for our Police Department. Thank you very much.
Our last proclamation is in regard to Everett Middle School. Jeff Gomez, the president, who I would like to have stepped forward. Not president, he's the principal. Jeff, would you please come, come forward? Well, I read this proclamation. This is to designate May 8th, 2017, as Everett Medical, Middle School Day. Whereas Everett Medical, Middle School has a 50-year history in the City of Wheat Ridge, and whereas Everett was named for one of the city's preeminent civic leaders, Arton Martin N. Everett, and whereas Everett School has a long history of enriching the lives of Wheat Ridge children and their families. And whereas the City of Wheat Ridge is proud to recognize 50 years of dedicated service by teachers and staff at Everett Middle School, educating young people from a variety of backgrounds, beliefs, and cultures, preparing them to lead successful lives and make significant contributions to the world as they venture forth toward the future. Now therefore, I, Joyce J., Mayor, and the City and County, City Council of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, in recognition of your 50-year history, do hereby proclaim May 8th, 2017, as Everett Middle School Day, and thanks for your dedicated service in our community.
First, I want to thank Mayor J. for giving us this plaque and this proclamation as well. City Council, we appreciate it. We do have two former principals that were at Everett. We have Russ Ramsey, was there from 83 to 91, nine years, and Kathy Norton, 99 to 2008. So I want to thank you both for being here. And Janine, our Spanish teacher, has been there for 21 years in various capacities, so thank you for being here. I want to remind everyone that we do have our 50-year celebration on Wednesday, May 10th. Open house is from 4:30 to about 6:45, and then we have a ceremony in our cafeteria right following that, so we, hopefully, a lot of people will come and join us, especially a lot of Everett Raiders and staff. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll have to tell you, I saw, I saw Principal Gomez on Saturday, and he was in the dunk tank, and all of the students were having a lot of fun trying to dunk him. So he, he's quite a principal. Okay. Well, we were hoping that another council member might attend, might show up so that we could...
She's on her way.
She's on her way?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Do we have any citizens to speak?
She called? If not, we'll pause.
Oh, good. Since we're, we have a lot of time available. Stephanie Meadows, would you slowly walk up?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Meadows. I think you're J. Council members. I would like to talk to you about some current concerns I have with the growing homeless population in Wheat Ridge. I also want to introduce myself, since I will be talking with you next Monday for the study session, where I'm told I will have a very brief opportunity to speak with all of you. I'm here because I hope that our city can be a leader in addressing the homeless issues Jefferson County is facing right now. Summer is coming, and along, and along with that, more people are camping outside. We have already seen an increase in the homeless population, and if we don't start addressing these issues with more urgency, it will overwhelm all of us. My wife and I moved to Wheat Ridge nine years ago from Five Points. Our house backs to the Green Belt near the Youngfield parking lot, and that is why we bought it. We love that we can walk out of our back door and feel like we are far removed from the city. My six-year-old son, Noah, over here, he has grown up playing in the lakes and the creek behind our house, and he loves searching for Pokemon along the bike path. Over the past couple of years, we and our neighbors have noticed an increase in the homeless population on the Green Belt. We have found several camps close to our house, and smelled fires from camps under I-70 on the Clear Creek bike path. While walking my dog this past Saturday, I even found two camps, one on Clear Creek near Kipling and one under Kipling on the creek. And I did provide you folks with the news. I've also seen an increase in panhandlers, especially at the Apple Village Shopping Center, where they have been sleeping and living around the vacant buildings on the property. Given my prior experience with the Denver's homeless population, I'm worried about the increase of this population here in Wheat Ridge. The camp I found under Kipling at Clear Creek is not as big, but if it's not addressed soon, it can be just as bad as the one that was recently removed from Johnson Park. I'm here because I want to help be a part of the effort to make Wheat Ridge safe for the housed community, the homeless community, and protect our parks and open spaces. For two and a half years, I was a homeless outreach officer with the Denver Police Department. My job was everything homeless. It was my job to know who the homeless folks were in the downtown area. I knew their names, I knew where they camped, I knew what their addictions and mental health issues were, and I regularly communicated with the homeless service providers about them. I attended meetings concerning homeless services, and I was frequently at the shelters. I helped write the Denver Police Department's procedures to enforce the camping ordinance and trained the entire department on it. But the bulk of my time was dealing with homeless camps. These camps are not safe, not for the people camping or the community. I've had to clean camps where we easily collected 100 syringes, which were thoughtlessly discarded. Drug paraphernalia, food, clothes, trash, feces, all left behind with complete disregard. I have gone into homeless camps where there were teenage runaways living with grown adults. I have gone into camps where I was convinced I would find a dead body because the odor was so bad. Here in Wheat Ridge, these issues are not new, and I'm sure the city has been dealing with them as best they can. I want to help. I want to share my experiences and knowledge about the problem I had, about the problems I had to deal with, and what worked and what didn't work. I'm also here to say that this is not solely a law enforcement issue. Numerous city departments are touched by homeless issues. One of the most important tools I had while I was working was relationships I had built with other city departments. I took multiple city agencies, the Police Department, Parks and Rec, the city attorney, and social services working together to deal with homeless issues. I believe that it will take all of us, the city and the community, to help the homeless and protect our quality of life at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
And I'm calling Shannon Fedriz Rizzi. Would you please pronounce your name for me and spell it? Go ahead into, in the microphone.
Can you hear me? Hi, I'm Shannon Fedrizzi. I'm a local business owner. I-
Spell your last name and give-
...
And your address?
10160 West 50th Avenue. So I'm a local business owner. I started my business in 2015. It's a upscale salon suite concept. Like I said, I'm over off I-70 and Kipling, and I've had many challenges being a successful business owner in the City of Wheat Ridge. And I spoke with Larry Matthews, and he suggested maybe I come highlight a couple of the issues. One current one is a zoning law that appears to be antiquated that's affecting my business. Like I said, I have 19 suites. I rent my suites to anybody that needs a small space to run the business. They're move-in ready, much like you would enter an office suite setting and, and run your business out of an office. It's geared towards salon professionals, but it can be anybody. I recently had a guy apply for a business license. He signed a lease. He wants to run an upscale tattoo shop out of my space, and was denied the license because of a zoning law that my location is not zoned for tattoos, which requires a special use permit. I'm a stone's throw away from industrial. If I was there, I wouldn't need a special use permit for tattoos. He, you know, the kind of people that I rent to are not the kind of people that are going to go through a two-month lengthy process to get approved for a special use to run a business. They're going to go across the street to Arvada or Lakewood, where, you know, anywhere they can go to my competition to get set up and get in business quicker. You know, I understand that tattoos may at one point in time been a, had a negative connotation with them, but today they're very mainstream. It's no different than people getting permanent makeup tattoos, eye tattoos, eyebrow tattoos, things like that. My current tenants, I've got 12 out of 19 suites occupied, and mostly are hairstylists, all of which have tattoos, and we're very excited to have these guys come in. So, yeah, I'm just wondering if, what can be done to look at this law and see, you know, is there anything that can be updated on this, what appears to be an antiquated law? Tattoos are very mainstream now, and you look around, we've got how many pot shops in the City of Wheat Ridge. I think tattoos are pretty, there's no detriment, there's no extra traffic. I'm not quite certain what the reason is, other than a negative connotation from the past.
So you're hoping not to have, to have a special use permit?
Yes. I'm in a commercial area. There's no residents within, you know, a pretty far area. It just seems crazy to me that I have to go through this lengthy process, and I will probably lose him, which is thousands of dollars out of my pocket. And like I said, I've only got 12 of 19 suites. For many reasons, I have had difficult issues in this location, one of which, just like she highlighted, is the transience and the crime over in that area, which I was naive and unaware of all of the crime from that hotel, which my tenants all call the crack hotel, because of the, the trash that comes out of it. A few weeks ago, I'm sure you know, had, I had a man stripped down completely naked in front of my front door, broad daylight, and pranced around in front of my female tenants that were working in their window suites. So they're scared, and this detours people from wanting to come rent from me.
Okay, Shannon, thank you for bringing it to our attention. And that would be an item that if, if a council member wanted to bring it up, we would discuss it.
Yeah, and I can, I can, is that the last citizen comment?
I'm sorry?
Is that the last citizen comment?
Yes.
I, I can speak to some of her comments, Shannon's comments, if you'd like, just so everybody has a little bit of background. Our current, our code does currently require a special use permit for body art establishments, as they're defined in the Wheat Ridge Code. That ordinance was passed in January of 2003, and that does require a special use permit in the RC, C1, and C2 districts. And I was, I think, employed for six months here at the city, so I barely remember this discussion. I don't remember exactly the reasoning behind it, honestly. A special use permit can be approved administratively, so I don't know as, 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 I don't want to say her last name, because I'll probably get it wrong. As Shannon mentioned, I don't know if it would take two months, but if there is a protest because of the special use permit, it would have to come in front of city council. So if there is no protest, it could be approved administratively. So there is a process that they could go through to make, to get a business license in that area.
Which would be a shorter process.
It could be if it's, again, if there's no protest. It only require, it only takes one protest that bumps it up from administrative approval to city council. So it could take longer if, if somebody protests a tattoo or a body art establishment in that location.
So Patrick, just a quick question, because it's going to take just as long to probably change the, the codes and stuff.
Yes.
So, I mean, if you're looking at a special use permit administrative, no protest, what timeframe?
I think less than a month, I, I would believe, probably.
So it might be a first go-around for this tenant at least, and then possibly then we could look for the long-term of the change.
Correct, if that's what council chooses, yep.
Does that help? Okay. Okay, let's move on with our meeting now that, oh, I'm sorry. Larry, you had a question on this?
Yeah, well, just to clarify too, in our discussions, the timeframe of two months was considered to be somewhat lengthy, and there was questions as to what all would really be involved, and why it had to be such a lengthy process. And for Ms. Fedrizzi's benefit, I have been in contact with our building department, Mr. John Stone. He's, I work in my basement at home, and I don't always get phone calls, and he had called me today, and I was, wanted to give me a verbal explanation of what's going on a little bit. And unfortunately, by the time I went upstairs and the phone kicked in, I missed that phone call today. So I will forward that information to you.
Can you tell me, was the city council, was it a little, a little?
I understand. That's why we're here.
Well, just to clarify that, it is, it's a city council issue to change the code to not require a special use permit, but there is a process currently in place that a body art establishment can go through, and it is a special use permit. And again, it's administrative approval. If there's no, no protest, it could be fairly quick. But if there is a protest from one of the neighbors, it'd have to go through city council.
Worth a try. Okay, we can move on. Kristi Davis has arrived, and we have a quorum now, and we can move on to item number one. Mr. Pond.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to introduce a motion to ratify my oral appointment of the Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Committee. At issue, the purpose of the Wheat Ridge Environmental Sustainability Committee is to involve the community in recommending and prioritizing environmental sustainability goals for the City of Wheat Ridge, municipal operations, and other community-wide sustainability efforts. The committee will provide recommendations on effective environmental programs and policies to the city council, and will serve as a forum for the community to offer input concerning environmental sustainability within the following six topic areas: green building, education and communication, energy efficiency and renewable energy, solid waste and recycling, transportation, and water. Limited funding will be provided for initially, initially for meeting facilitation, services, and other incidental expenses. The mayor and Mayor Protem will each contribute $1,000 for meeting expenses from their community outreach funds. The committee will report back to the city council after three months if additional resources are needed.
If I can speak to this, we had an incredible amount of excellent, excellent applications with, with really outstanding credentials, as well as enthusiasm. It was a tough choice, based on, based on knowledge and, on educational experience, as well as a variety, so that a variety of environmental topics could be looked at, so that we didn't all just hammer in on one area. So it was really a, a good process, and we had to up it up, up the number from nine to 11, really for two- really for two reasons. One is we had so many good applicants, and the other was that we thinking that some could drop out, or maybe the night that they all select doesn't work well for them for certain ones, or as we, as we go on, we lose some. So, there's any questions?
Madam Mayor?
Sure.
My main question is related to, under what authority are we devising this committee? Or how are we structuring this committee in, in which department, or how is it this, this committee is being established, given that there isn't any code or ordinance within the city allowing for the establishment of this type of committee?
Well, it is an ad hoc committee, so it's for one specific purpose, if that is of any help to you. But you're thinking under this division or department, is that, yeah?
No, it's just that in looking at the, the city codes and regulations, we have a set number of our boards and commissions, but this isn't necessarily one of those. And I understand that this, you're defining this as an ad hoc committee, but under the, the current motion, or that what we're considering here is to ratify committee appointments, but there's nothing in the, the city code that suggests that we ratify committee appointments. So I'm just, I'm curious as to, we're, we're being asked to ratify something that isn't in the city code, as well as, there's nothing in the city code that says we ratify committee appointments.
Mr. Pond?
Well, perhaps the city manager can talk, talk to some of the history of, of ad hoc committees, and then, and then maybe that would clear up whether or not we have to vote at all. Perhaps that's Councilmember Urban's comment. I don't think this is obviously intending to create a committee in conflict with the charter, so if there's no reason to vote, maybe that clears it up.
I can speak to it a little bit. Sorry that our city attorney's not here. He did provide an opinion to city council in the past on this very issue, because asked by former Mayor DiTulio on this procedure, and the city attorney at that time said that the mayor has authority to appoint these types of ad hoc committees. I'm looking through the memo to see if, if voting is required. I think we've always, at least to my knowledge, have allowed council as a courtesy to provide a vote on the committees. And, you know, without, without reading through this, I should have had a thought of cop, of including this memo from the city attorney in your packet, but did not do that. But city attorney has opined on this in the past, that, that the mayor has the authority and right to form these types of committees.
Oh, yeah, sure. And that, I would totally agree that the mayor has the authority and the ability to set up a committee of any ilk, and it's not within our purview to suggest otherwise. However, my concern here is relative to, number one, the ratification of appointments to that committee, and then in addition to that, while it was mentioned in here relative to the funding being somewhat relegated to the, the expenses coming from the mayor and the mayor pro tems, community outreach funds, it's not necessarily explicitly relegated to those funds wholly, in that there could be other funds used for these. And so there's two concerns that I have. One is that we're ratifying these appointments, and two, that we're potentially funding a committee, an ad hoc committee at, without any sort of cap or definition of what that funding might be in the long-term, or where that funding might come from. Even though you are describing where certain amounts of money will be coming from, it isn't necessarily relegating it only to those funds, if that makes sense. But, but, while you're describing that the $1,000 is coming from these community outreach funds, you're not necessarily saying these are the only funds allocated for this committee. Do you see what I'm saying?
Right.
There could be other funds allocated towards this, and that's my concern, is that we sort of leave the door open for unended funding without any sort of cap or limitation on that, and it is somewhat ad hoc. So that's my concern, is that we're sort of opening the door without any sort of cap on that.
Okay. Ms. Davis?
So I just have a question, tie in with Zach's, and maybe to help me understand a little better. How, I guess, how are these different than like the Dirt Task Force or the, the Budget Appropriation Little Committee? I mean, I know one thing that's different was that as council people, we also provided feedback on, on some of the candidates. But I guess, is, I guess, and this might be a question for Patrick, is, I mean, I don't think in those committees we said no funds can be budgeted to you. I mean, in this case, it was specific that some funds will be budgeted. I'm not, I mean, it's not like it's, it's a huge amount, but I don't think it didn't, in any of the other committees, it didn't, it didn't like set a, no money can be funded to this committee, or a max, or a min, kind of going back to Mr. Urban's question of, it says 2,000, but it doesn't say not to exceed 2,000. So I guess the other committees probably didn't say something of that language. So I guess my question, because I guess I viewed this similar to the other two kind of ad hoc committees we've worked on, to involve members of our community, and I guess I just saw this as something similar. So I guess, what's the difference between this one and those other twos?
And-
If I could have Mr. Goff answer, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think ad hoc kind of describes this, because each of these committees that you've mentioned, to my recollection in the past, have been created maybe a little bit differently each time. Appointments might have been done a little differently, the scope, and, yeah, budget sometimes was talked about, sometimes not. Some of the meetings we televised, which obviously there's a budget to that. I believe the mayor's suggesting that these would not be televised to save funding. So, yeah, I don't remember any specifics, council-directed requirements on, on how much or how, not, how much to spend on a committee or not.
This committee also has a three-month kind of a report back to council date, so that, you know, what has been accomplished, where, where do we go from there? The money that, that's been offered is for the, the, what do they call it? The woman who will be directing-
The facilitator.
Woman or man?
Moderator.
Moderator, exactly. So that it's not that heavy a burden on, on staff, and we'll be able to get to, to a place that's good. I was also thinking the fact that I was on a finance and budget committee ad hoc many years ago, and that was pretty much it. We just did our job, and then we were done. I, you haven't spoken yet, so please, Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'm not sure I understand the funding issue exactly, Ms. Urban. Would you, would you prefer that the funding, that we direct the funding to come from some other fund, with a cap, without a cap? What, how would you prefer that we handle that?
Given that it's an ad hoc committee of the mayor, I would direct her to advise where the funding would come from for her ad hoc committee, and so it would be with her and her bailiwick to make that decision as to where that funding would come from. But my concern is, is that we as council, in ratifying the members of this committee, are also, in, in the same motion, also dealing with a funding question of funding this committee, which I think could be two separate questions, and ratifying these appointments to this committee being one question, and the second question being funding relative to this, to this committee. But if I were looking at this, I would say that the funding to this needs to be relegated to that community outreach funds that have already been identified and leave it at that.
Do we have any money in those funds?
No, I think that's-
No, these are our, our-
And your funds?
Right.
Yeah. So, so that's what's happening, so what?
I think it just wants two motions.
Oh, so, yeah.
At least that's what I heard.
Just want to go back to Councilmember Davis's question about what's the difference between the prior ad hoc committees and this one, and as it relates to the Dirt Task Force and the, even the outside agency committee and some of those other groups, is that, to me, it appeared as though those groups had very specific directives and outcomes as it related to what we expected them to go out and achieve. And in the development of this particular committee and, and then the primary mission that has been devised for these, you're literally asking them to rescue the planet, and, and that is, to me, a bit of an overreach, and I want it to be a lot more concrete and a lot more outcome-oriented, and, and to me, it just doesn't get us to where we need to be as far as having a sustainable, sustainable committee, meaning that it, it, to me, it seems like something that is going to peter out after a certain amount of time. Number one, because of the amount of people that you have on the committee. If you look at the, the city rules, we talk about our boards and commissions, and I know this is not a commission, but we talk about those commissions being of eight people, and there's a reason for that, is because if you have too many people, then it just gets unwieldy and unmanageable. So those are my main concerns, and why this committee is different from the other committees, is it's too big, it's too unfocused, and it does not have enough clear targets in mind as to what we want them to achieve. That's my concern.
Okay. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. I, I take exception to a couple of things here. When we first talked about this during study session, and we were giving consensus, I said I was in favor of this as long as absolutely no city funds were involved, that it was a true citizens committee, and that we weren't getting into another sideline business, which we already see the door opening to this. And in fact, the comment was made at the end of the study session, that one hoped that this would lead to a full-time city employee, which is another $100,000 of the taxpayers' money every year. So that was my concern, one of my major concerns to start with, is this was just opening the door for more bureaucracy. And in fact, it says here, the committee will report back to city council after three months if additional resources are needed. And here we go down that roller coaster of, well, it's only a little bit more money. It's just a little bit more money, and it's something that's not really a core city function. And I have the same concerns as Councilmember Urban, as far as what are exactly are we ratifying here? The committee itself goes on forever. There is no time limit on it. It just says it's going to go on until they make a final presentation or are happy to say they're done. So I, I'm concerned that there's nothing so permanent in government as a temporary agency or a temporary committee. And we need to not go into our, this situation with our eyes wide shut if we're going to be asked to ratify something. So that's one of my concerns, is the money. I agree also on the climate change issue. I mean, I've got several articles right here that, A, climate change is not absolutely agreed to, but it's not in the purview of our city government to go out and try and save the world, which is what climate change is all about. I had, I was absolutely in favor of when we had the young lady come in here and say she wanted to start a business recycling glass. It was a private enterprise, couple of dollars for seed money, I had no, no problems with that, but then we're done. But I can just see this burgeoning into a black hole of where all of a sudden, we're expected to start shelling out $1,000 this year, $10,000 next year, $50,000 next year to save the planet, which is not what our function here is. As far as sustainability within the city itself, we have people like Mr. Brink and all our other division leaders, directors, and I mean, it's up to Mr. Brink to say, well, I own three, I own three dump trucks, should I be using natural gas? We don't need someone special to get into that business. So now we're going to be into the business of maybe deciding what people can or cannot do for sustainability. Do we force them into throwing plastic in one bin or whatever? I don't know where this is leading, and so I've got some concerns over that. So basically, I, I'm not really in favor of ratifying something that's just open done for time, open done for number of members, open-ended for what they're going to accomplish, and open-ended for cost.
Mr. Pond?
Couple of clarifications, and, and then I suppose a decision on whether or not any vote is necessary, since I suppose that's the real point of order that's being asked for. The, I, I do think that perhaps the, the thing that should be reiterated and not tied to the financial impact is, is that we did ask the committee to report back in three months, which it, to me, means regardless of viewpoint, because my viewpoint is that this is a reasonable scope for people to engage in and come back, and essentially give us an update in three months, is what we asked for in the study session. At that point, I think it was, it was given to us as an opportunity to, to, to advance it at that point or not advance it at that point. So, you know, I think that it has a limit of three months, frankly, and then, and then we, we, we start to talk about it. That's what I understood from the study session. I support that. I think that's a reasonable, a reasonable thing to do. As for the money, I certainly appreciate if there's some hesitancy based on your point of view about, about government, sustainability, the entanglement of those things, to be concerned about the money, and I don't know, I will let the mayor chime in, but my recommendation might be that the dollars that have been attributed here should be adequate for the three months, and we can, we can determine, the American determine if capping that right now is to the, to the liking of, of council from the objections tonight. Back to the main point, it sounds like there's no real need, perhaps if, if the city manager has looked at the whole, the entirety of the memo that he was referring to, there may not be a need to, to ratify by vote, and then that would certainly avoid any discomfort that's been, that's been stated in, in terms of that. So perhaps we could, I, I would, I would suggest that we determine that first, whether or not we have a way forward without, without voting, was a courtesy, I suppose, so if that's the case, we can at least, we can at least then get to the other, other issue of, of budget. Patrick?
I don't believe these memos specifically address if council has to actually ratify an appointment or not. It just says, um, the mayor may appoint, this, this may be clear enough, the mayor may appoint special or select committees, period, is all it says. Doesn't say anything about if council votes required.
Since this, I guess, since this is, since this is on our agenda as a, as a resolution or a mot, or a motion, I guess the, the question would be whether or not we can abandon, you know, we don't have to take the motion and-
You can pull the item.
We can pull the item.
Or vote to pull the item.
Motion to postpone indefinitely?
Or mo, yeah?
Just pull the-
Just pull it.
Pull it.
Yeah, I, I think-
What motion to pull the-
A motion has been made.
No, there has been no motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Just don't make a motion, yeah?
Don't make a motion.
And, and I guess my, I guess the point would be, because I, I want folks to know, but if we find out that it has to be ratified by council, then it will come back. If not, the committee will move forward as is. Is that what?
We could do that, too.
What we're assuming?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm okay with that either way.
Okay. So then I, I guess I would ask, to, to the extent that any more specificity needs to be delivered on this dais right now related to the, related to the funding, which we've already committed, and I'm sure any other council members who would willing, are willing to commit, but that's our, our prerogative. Outside of that, I guess I would ask if there's any, any more specifics requested.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
I move that we pull this item from the agenda.
Okay.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, that we pull the, this item, this resolution out of the agenda, and please cast your votes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Just, just for clarity, we can go forward. I can go ahead and appoint the committee, as well as outreach funds, or anybody else who would like to use their outreach funds. And I think that the, the rules, not the rules, but the goals stated are pretty specific, and I don't believe our, our belief was ever that we were going to create climate change, but wanting to participate, our city to participate in what is a really regional and national effort to be a good stewards of our environment. Okay, we can move on to item number two. item number two. Which is Mr. Fitzgerald?
Okay, item number two is a resolution, resolution number thirteen dash twenty seventeen, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Wheat Ridge and the city and county of Denver concerning engineering services for the extension of a, of a Denver Water Department conduit. The issue, as part of the Clear Creek Crossing project, the city has been working with the property owner and CDOT to, to design and attain approvals for construction of the I-70 hook ramps that are needed to accommodate the development. An additional variable requiring extensive coordination among all parties is Denver Water's plan to replace a large diameter water distribution main identified as conduit sixteen, running between Rawson Reservoir and the Moffett Treatment Plant in Lakewood. The main runs across the site in a diagonal southeasterly direction from the northwest corner of the property before crossing beneath I-70. Construction of the hook ramp, ramps, which are necessary to accommodate the Clear Creek Crossing development and a portion of the Denver Water's work are scheduled to occur at the same time and at the same location. The intergovernmental agreement provides a means for redesigning the Denver Water's work to avoid conflicts and allow both activities to proceed simultaneously. And the financial impact to the city is twenty-two thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. In other words, we're going down the tube.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have Scott and I'm, we're both here to answer any questions, but I think Scott is gonna add a few more words to this.
Sure, yeah, thank you Mayor J, members of the council. As Councilmember Fitzgerald said in the, the issue remarks there, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. The Clear Creek Crossing, which is moving forward pretty well right now, we had a public meeting, public informational meeting last, was it Tuesday or Wednesday? Wednesday. Had a great turnout, I think around a hundred and fifty people or so. It was all very positive, it was a good meeting. Talk about traffic mostly, but including the hook ramps. So, we're moving forward with that. Denver Water has had this conduit sixteen replacement project in the books for quite a while. In fact, I think originally, a few years back, they were originally scheduled to do it either start last year or the year before, but it got pushed back for various reasons. So, this issue with this tunneling bore pit, basically as, as the conduit replacement runs from Rawston Reservoir to the Lakewood Treatment Plant, a lot of that is open cut, open trench, but where they go under major roads like I-70, Highway fifty-eight, Highway ninety-three, they're, they're doing, you know, this, this tunneling underneath the roadways since they don't wanna try and trench across those, which isn't a good idea. The nice thing about the high, I-70 tunneling is they're also gonna tunnel right underneath the Applewood Shopping Center. This main goes, you know, right through there too, so that avoids a lot of disruptions too. But, so in order to dig this tunnel, they do need this, this large excavation pit and then a large staging area around that. And the, and the problem is this is right where the hook ramps are, which by itself is not really a problem. It's just the way the pieces are falling into place with the developer's schedule and Denver Water's schedule. These things appear that they're gonna be happening at the same time, as early as this fall. There's still a lot of moving pieces though, you know, we've, between CDOT, you know, getting the, the approval for the hook ramps, you know, working with Denver Water, the developers' timeline, approval schedule and so forth. There's a lot of moving pieces here, so it is possible that there's an outside chance Denver Water might get in there and get their work done first and, you know, maybe we don't have to do this extension of the bore pit. But the way the pieces seem to be falling right now, we think it's best on our part to at least prepare for this possibility that, you know, it may need to get moved so that both the developer and Denver Water can be out there working at the same time, because these hook ramps are, are really the primary piece that needs to happen first before much else can happen on the site. So, that's kind of the gist of it there. This is IGA strictly for the engineering services. In the event that we do have to, you know, move that bore pit in the future, we, we would have an estimated cost for that and then probably come back to council again. So, be happy to try and answer any questions.
And just to add to that, the budget for this is appropriate for it to come from the two E-funds. We believe the total cost of the hook ramps is gonna be less than the ten million, so there should be plenty of funds available to cover this expense out of the two E-funds.
Questions? Please give us the motion then.
I move to approve resolution number thirteen dash twenty seventeen, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Wheat Ridge and the city and county of Denver concerning engineering services for the extension of a Denver Water Department conduit. In other words, we're gonna send twenty-two thousand dollars down the drain.
Second. I don't wanna vote on that.
That was a good PR move.
Second.
If we have a second from Mr. Bond, Mr. Pond, please cast your votes.
I forgot to activate it. It was all cleared and I didn't turn it on. Please vote again, I'm sorry. It's a crazy night. Motion carries five to zero.
My mayor pro tem here, thank you, reminded me that because we did not have a, a quorum, we forgot, we didn't, we weren't able to move the, approve the council minutes of April twenty-four and study session notes of April seventeen and April twenty-four. Are, are there any changes to this? You don't, no changes, then they're, they're approved as presented. Thank you very much. I believe that concludes our meeting tonight. And we can go on to city manager's matters.
Thank you, Mayor. Our city attorney did confirm, he's stuck in the airport in Colorado Springs. They wouldn't let him come to Denver because of the weather, but he did confirm that council vote is not required on a committee that is created by the mayor. So, he did confirm that. As you all know, we did have a hailstorm that did come through Wheat Ridge, pretty severe. We had, we're still doing an inventory on, on city facilities and property that were damaged, but we had about sixty percent of our fleet damaged in some form or fashion. We do have at least nine patrol vehicles that are still available for our daily patrol, so we should be able to get by on those until we get the rest of the windows replaced in the vehicles. So, just a heads up to our citizens, I already got a call myself personally from a company out of Florida asking to come to my home and, and do an inspection on my roof. So, please be very careful when you receive these phone calls and make sure that if you do have damage to your house, that you're using a reputable company and appraiser to look at that. So, you'll be getting probably lots of calls. Yeah, Wheat Ridge was on the, the weather this evening that we did get the, we were the hardest hit in the metro area. We had the largest hail and so there's quite a bit of damage out there. Thank you.
Oh, I wanted to report back to you at a really good conference in Colorado Springs. We had one speaker, his name is Ed Letessa and he's from the University of Cincinnati and he spoke on kind of what works and what doesn't with community corrections and changing behavior. And then we had on Saturday a very interesting panel of ladies. There is a group called SAVE, Survivors Against Violence Everywhere. And it's survivors of domestic violence who go and speak to folks who are on probation or parole, who have been convicted of domestic violence. And these ladies told their stories. One was, she was an ER nurse and she was married to a, an abuser and finally got, had her life threatened several times and finally got away from him. Now, there was a fairly young gal who grew up with an abusive father and then ended up with an abusive boyfriend and how she got away from that. But it's, domestic violence is just, it's a very, it's out there and everybody probably knows somebody that has gone through that and, but these, this panel that talks to these offenders, the point is empathy, so that the, the offenders can begin to have some empathy about their victims and, and what they've actually gone through. And to see it from someone else's eyes and hear someone else tell a story is, they, they've been doing it long enough to, to combine, compile some data about it being beneficial, if you will, to those offenders to understand their behavior and want to make some changes. So, it was very, very fruitful.
Very compelling. Let's go with the, Mr. Urban, District Two.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanna thank our Treasurer Jerry DeTulio for his efforts in putting together the T with Treasurer event that we had on Thursday night and well attended and appreciate all the staff updates that we received at that and all the citizens that came out for that. Just to reiterate some of the items mentioned by the city manager regarding the recent storm that we had, I wanted to go through a couple of quick checklists for consumers with respect to their roofs and these are the important things to keep in mind when, when dealing with roofing companies. And it's important to only accept bids from local contractors that you have called. Only accept bids with price scope of work and materials written on them. Homeowners should have a seventy-two hour rescission period, cancellation period. Never sign anything that has a cancellation fee. Request five local references that the estimator personally has worked with over one year ago. Ask for copies of the roofer's workman's comp and general liability insurance and get verification that those are current. Make sure the name on the insurance certificate matches the name of the roofer. Make sure the roofer pulls a building permit and has a new roof inspected. That's key. Make, do not pay for materials in advance. It is illegal for a contractor to offer to pay, waive, or rebate your deductible. Never turn over insurance checks. Pay any money until the job is complete. And always work with people that are local to the community and avoid those fly-by-night organizations that are likely to come into our community. Yes, Mr. Matthews?
If I may interject to his next contractor, never take less than three bids. Competition is one of your biggest safeguards. So, talk to at least three different folks and get, and get competitive pricing. Thank you.
Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna take a few minutes and thank everyone who applied to be a part of the Environmental Sustainability Committee. And actually, I wanted to name the, the ones who will be impaneled on the mayor's committee. Eric Wilson, April Noick, Karen Berry, Alexander Helling, Amy DePier, Dan Grave, Robert Robinson, Adam Wiley, Joy Op, Heather Head, and Andy Rasmussen. We had quite a few people apply and an incredible amount of experience and education and willingness to be involved in our community on these topics. I just wanna thank everyone who put forward. I'm sorry that we couldn't do more, but as this advances and the meetings are set, I, I encourage everyone to come and at least watch the proceedings. I know that it will be educational and important engagement for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I have nothing, but I just wanted to add one more thing about the environmental committee. Don't laugh. And I, I would agree with Mr. Matthews and Mr. Urban regarding, you know, we don't want something to snowball into another FTE or in full-time employee type of situation. But I do think, you know, we always can collect small wins from these committees. I know even knocking on doors, you know, there's been questions about is there a place where we could create a compost area or, you know, where to take our Christmas trees and, you know, those types of things. So, even, you know, some small wins out of this group would be a good start as well. So, I mean, I know it's something that council will have to decide on whatever they come up with, but I think some of the small wins where we get people involved, like the glass company is another example of how we can communicate that, advertise it, what that looks like, how we can get them to perhaps pitch in for the little buckets or whatever they needed, those types of things. So, I look forward to hearing from that committee. And that's all. Thanks.
Like Ms. Davis, I have nothing, but I'll talk about.
I personally.
I, I would like to say that looking at the qualifications of the applicants is amazing to know that we have resources like that within our community. Just amazing qualifications of people with advanced degrees who've done many important things in the environment and, and work for the federal government and other places. I'm very impressed.
Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. Councilwoman Duran and I met with Ms. Meadows about a week and a half ago or two weeks ago and discussed this homeless issue. I wanted to thank her for coming in tonight and giving us a preview. And Councilwoman Duran had some hail damage, so that's why she couldn't be here tonight. And I know she wanted to announce this a little bit and I'm maybe stealing her leakiness to her, but since there are some of us here, it was, I'm not sure if you caught that, but Ms. Meadows actually, her main duty, her department when she worked for law enforcement in Denver was dealing with the homeless issue. And she is an expert of sorts and may not have a degree, but she spent a lot of time on the ground, getting real life, where the rubber meets the road experience. And at the study session, we are going to ask if you would consider granting her extended time to do a presentation and discuss this with us. And I think it's always an excellent idea to get outside the nine dots. And by outside the nine dots, I mean outside our own little group here now and get someone with some outside experience and certainly with a lot bigger department and a lot that's dealt with this issue for a lot of years out there, long before it became an issue here in town. So, I would, just wanted to give you the heads up that we will be asking for a consensus to allow her to give us some additional information, much as we did with Jesse Hill for the R-1A issue. Thank you.
Okay, sounds like a great idea, actually. That's it for tonight. I do, you know, you reminded me of something and I wanted to say that when you look at the, in regard to the environmental committee, when you look at the backgrounds of this, of these people, the professional levels that are working in the industry or, or have high education in it or accomplishments in it, we are receiving such a bargain here to have these people. We, we've gotta look at that as a value as well, that they're willing to give their evenings to do this. And they come from all levels and all, and all types of education, as well as the excitement that we're, we're hearing from, from our citizens who will be a part of it. So, I am glad we're doing it and that we'll go forward. And I, I think that we're gonna come up with something that, that's valuable to us. And that's it.